2022, if everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Officer Phillips, would you lead us in the pledge today?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here. And we have a quorum. Thank you, everybody. At this time in the meeting, we open the floor to anyone that has public comments that would like to address City Council. This would be for items that are listed on the agenda. Members of the audience who would like to address Council may do so for items that are on the agenda, and they will be allowed three minutes to speak each. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Council? Please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marissa Penland. I live at 7827 Greeley Street. I'm here to talk about the new business, specifically Article C. I'm not really sure the actual terms. We have at, this is regarding Puff buying our apartment building. It's bulldozing for extra parking. Up until yesterday, we have not heard anything about this. We have not heard from our landlords. We have not heard anything. We have, multiple of our tenants are here to stand up for having some form of information. My family's lived there since I was a kid. Like, it's just, it's a little messed up. We don't really know what's going on. It just seems like this is happening all under our noses. And I just kind of want to know what is happening, because we know nothing. I want to say thank you to Brad for coming out and handing information for it, because that was, for us, the first time we've gotten any form of communication about this. Any form of communication. And it's messed up. We have families that live there. It is for people who are low income, and it will leave 12 families possibly homeless. So, that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Melissa Holcomb. I also live at 7827 Greeley Street. I live in apartment number four. I, um, sorry, I'm not good at public speaking. I'm, um, doing this, we weren't told anything, like Marissa was saying, we weren't told anything about what, um, you know, we, everything was sunshine and roses until we barely found out, you know, this was done all under our noses. And, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. By doing this, your, this would not just affect me, like, I only have to worry about myself and my fiance. I, not, not only this would affect me, it would affect everybody. I know at least, you know, a lot of the people who live there have children, and relocating is a thousand times harder when you have children. And, you know, what's Puff's intentions on what they're gonna do? Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jessica Lertola. I also live at 7827 Greeley. I live in apartment number one. I have also paid multiple months of rent prior. Also, I'm in a program that pays rent for me, so I have four children. Age is seven, three, one and a half, and four months. And I also was not notified, and so I got something on my door two days ago. And I have been in contact on and off with the landlord of 7827 Greeley and a few of the people that work there, and they said that they did not know about this also. We're just really asking what, what the laws are, you know, and the people that have paid in advance, and what, how is that gonna look for, just like she said, our children? I have four children that are involved with this. I have lived there for two years, and then prior to this, my family also lived there for six to seven years. So this is very traumatic on me and my family. I'm a single mother of four children, and I do this all on my own with them. And not being notified is gonna leave, you know, four little children, which, that's all that they knew, is homeless. So if we could just, you know, figure out on, you know, what level, what they're, if they are even, if that's even a possibility of staying there with everything that's going on, um, thank you.
Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Paul Cons. I live at 45814 Hicker. I'm up here to talk about the Great Lakes Water Authority bad debt expense. I don't know what this is going to cover, but I'm thinking that you're gonna be discussing payment of that bad debt against Highland Park not paying their amount of the bad debt, or paying the bad debt of Highland Park. I'd like to make sure that everyone's aware that Sterling Heights has refused to pay that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hello. Please state your name and address.
Good mor, I'm sorry, good evening, Utica City Council. My name is Sandra Hernan. I am not a resident of this city, however, I do come and enjoy some of the lovely businesses that you have here. Northern Grind is probably one of my favorite places to patronize. I'm actually here to let you know that I am part of a Jeep group called the Jeep Babes Michigan Chapter. We're actually a worldwide chapter. On May 21st, it's a huge day for Jeep Wrangler owners. It's our National Go Topless Day. We take our tops off our Jeeps, and we usually do a charity ride. This year, we're gonna be doing a charity awareness ride for 92 for 22. They're a veteran-based organization that brings awareness to veterans' suicide. They also help veterans in need. They're a very unique group that their board, their seated board, takes absolutely no funds that come in. Our route will be starting in the city of Warren at 29900 Civic Center Drive, and we will be going straight up Van Dyke to the American Legion Hall at 14146 Cass Avenue in your city. I have been in contact with the Warren Police Department, Commissioner Dwyer, and Sergeant Burga with the Sterling Heights Police Department with regards of offering us traffic assistance along our way. Our main concern is not only safety for our riders, but the public as well. We're anticipating at least 70 Jeeps, and Warthogs will be, and Detroit Signal will be pairing with us as well, so we're looking at another 70 motorcycles. So you can see it's gonna be quite a large event. Within the city of Utica itself, there's only three intersections that we're looking to ask the police department to assist us with traffic control. That would be from Hull Road to Han, where we make a left turn, and then to Cass Avenue, where we make the right turn to make it to the American Legion Hall. Also, I'd like to invite all the esteemed members of the council and the mayor, if you'd like to come and ride with us. It is a rain or shiny event. If you like getting some fresh air and wind in your hair, we're here. Just let us know if you'd like to come. I appreciate your time and listening to me and your consideration and what I'm asking for. I know this is a smaller community, and I know that resources and manpower can be a premium on that day, and any consideration you guys can give us would be awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? All right. For the record, public comments are closed. Now I need to go backwards and do something really positive, and Chief Cody, could you give us an introduction, please, sir?
Mayor, Council, thank you. I want to thank everybody for their support. We've done a lot to try and draw people to our police department, and today is one of the days where I get to introduce the Utica Police Department's newest addition to our patrol staff, Alante Phillips. Alante grew up in Flint, Michigan. He relocated to Alabama, where he attended Auburn University in pursuit of an electrical engineering degree. While in Alabama, Alante started working as a corrections officer for the Lee County Sheriff's Office. This led him to Lynette Police Department, where he became employed there as a police officer for two years. During this time, Alante Phillips was enlisted in the Army National Guard, in which he is still active today. Alante has relocated back to Michigan to be with family, and we're fortunate to find him. Something that you should know about Alante is he speaks three languages. He speaks Spanish, German, and French. He also signs for the hearing impaired, which we've already put to use in his time here today. So I'm proud to introduce and welcome Alante to our department. I look forward to seeing him enjoy a rewarding career. Tonight, Alante is joined by his family for his formal swearing-in. Alante's mother, Candace Burton, a sergeant with Flint Police Department, will be pinning his badge on him for tonight's ceremony. So I'd like to introduce Alante and his mother.
If you could raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible, please, and repeat after me, and I'll try to go slow. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
We'll stamp it, right?
I've got boys. He probably deserves it.
So Alante, no more call her mom, you got her sergeant.
Slutter.
We have no unfinished business tonight. Council, you've been presented in your packet all the consent business. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove from consent? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent business.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Motion. Motion by Deanne, support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We do have some correspondence tonight. We received a letter of support from Five Star Pawn Brokers dated March 3rd, 2022, City of Utica. We have been a corporate citizen here in Utica for a couple of years now. Over this time, we have had the opportunity to work directly with the Utica Police Department and have always found them to be extremely reliable, responsive, professional, and courteous. With all the national noise about defunding the police, as a corporate citizen of this community, we feel it is important to make our voice heard. Like most people in the city of Utica, we appreciate and support the Utica Police Department. In the spirit of this support, please accept this donation to the Utica Police Department, the amount of $1,000, to help fund our police. Sincerely, Five Star Pawn Ownership. And it's unfortunate, all our police just left the room, so they didn't get to hear the very nice letter. I'd be looking for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sakura. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Jeep Babes Michigan Awareness Charity Ride. Is she still in the room?
She's ducked out with the police officers.
So I have information from her. She said she had to go to attend her children.
Oh, okay.
And so she left me pretty much to ask on her behalf if that the, the event could take place as requested in the comments section.
Yep.
Prior to the meeting, and she was unaware that she was supposed to go and turn. So that would have been her presentation and her ask.
And in her request, did she mention police support for that event?
Yes.
And suggested.
Do we know what times they intend to conduct that activity?
It's the earlier part of the day.
Yeah, they start at 11:00 AM in Warren, so.
It says arrival time 12:30 PM in the agenda summary form.
If we have contact information, I can reach out and just coordinate.
No issues there, chief?
I don't see any.
Oh, it's just said at 12:30.
Yeah, yeah, 12, 12:00 PM it starts in Warren.
Yeah, approximate arrival time 12:30 PM.
All right. We would be looking for a motion to approve the Jeep Babes event.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzi, support by O'Donnell. And any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Sorry. Trenzi.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next item under new business is the request to hold the 2022 Gasoline Alley Car Show. Anyone that attended it last year, I'm sure you'd agree, it was a huge success, probably the best year yet. It seems to get better and better every year. Our friends over at USA Tire are already starting the planning, so this initial request is really just to hold the date and make sure they have approval before they begin all their other work. They'd be coming back to council for, you know, any road closure approvals that they're requesting, or, you know, any other thing from the city that they might need. So tonight, we would be looking for a motion to approve the scheduling of the 2022 Gasoline Alley Car Show on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, I was just gonna.
We could discuss after, after the.
I was just gonna make the motion, but that's okay. I'll support Mr. Sakura's.
Motion by Sakura, support by Deanne. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I'll make sure Mr. Mikalon knows that he can start his plans. I look forward to it. Next item under new business is the rezoning request for 727 Greeley Street. In your packet is all the information. We've also heard from several residents in the public comment section. We do have the property owner here, Mr. Keasy. Would you mind giving us a brief update, sir?
How you doing? My name's Marvin Keasy. I am, I have a business in Utica. Obviously, it's Puff Cannabis Company. Puff Cannabis Company is not the purchaser of this property, just so you guys know, it's a different entity. It's, it's got nothing to do with the business. This is an investment. We don't have plans on bulldozing the property. You guys were misled, so I'd appreciate it if Puff Cannabis and the property were not tied together, because it's a separate entity, it's an investment, and we don't have plans on bulldozing it tomorrow, or next week, or the month after that. There's gonna be time. Your landlord should have notified you guys that the property was being sold. The city did send out a letter saying that there were, that it was gonna get rezoned, from what I understand. So we're working on honoring the leases. Whoever has a lease, we're gonna honor it. We're gonna see where it takes us. We don't have plans on bulldozing the property immediately, or, you know, a month or two months from now. So we're gonna work with all the tenants. If we are to, say, do a redevelopment at that property, we will incentivize each and every single tenant, allocate a certain amount of funds to them to help them move, relocate. You know, we have somebody from, you know, our company that's gonna also reach out to different realtors, help you guys find another place to move to. The last thing that we want to do is have anybody homeless. I have three kids myself, so I see you walking. You know, the, the thing that we're trying to do is, we're buying the parcels around us, because what's going on right now in Utica is a lot of the properties near us are all inflated, okay? And we can't purchase anything. Our business is growing fast at Puff Cannabis Company, and strategically, I think that if I buy this property, lease it back to the company, and utilize it for parking, not saying demolishing the business, but at least getting an ingress egress on this parcel would help us out. Right now, that property has two signs that are in the city's easement that say no puff parking, okay? We've had four or five cars that parked in that lot that have been vandalized. We've had employees get bottles thrown at them when they close up the shop. So our thing is, we want to have control of that property, have access to that property, and eliminate these issues. It needs surveillance, it needs more lights, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of improvements that could be done there. Obviously, you know, the property was for sale, could have been anybody else, could have purchased it, could have done anything else with it. Right now, our plans are not to evict anybody. We're gonna honor the leases, and that's what we're gonna stick to. Can I take questions?
It's a, it's a little irregular, because, you know, that's what public comments was for.
I wasn't aware.
Does anyone on council have any objections to letting her speak?
No. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Can we know explicitly what you will be doing to help relocate residents, and explicitly what you will be doing to help them find new housing?
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna set you guys up with an email that you guys can email your requests to, your questions, and we'll answer them from there.
So you don't have any explicit.
Honestly, right now, for someone to post that we were gonna bulldoze the building and make it seem like it's gonna happen next week, next month, or the month after that is very misleading, I'd like to say.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because you guys are planning on bulldozing, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet, but you are planning on bulldozing.
That's, that's, that's not, that's not based on, we don't have an approval for that from the city yet, so I can't say that that's what we're gonna do. But we are gonna set up an email. You guys can reach out to that email, right? We'll help you figure out where you guys can relocate and incentivize you guys to have a certain amount of funds to help you guys move.
And how many funds?
How many funds?
Non-allocated, correct?
That's not, that's not gonna get disclosed at this meeting right now.
So you don't have a plan for that at all?
Like I said, we're working on a plan. So this property was just put under contract less than a month ago. And what we, what we're trying to do is make sure that we can get this property rezoned to commercial, because right now it's residential. That's our only plan in our agenda right now. Our plans in the near future could be redevelopment. We do a lot of redevelopment in the city. I've done a lot in the city, and we've done nothing about evicting tenants. We don't have plans of evicting tenants. That's just not the way we operate. Anything else?
Can you give us an approximation of when you plan to bulldoze?
We'll provide the city with an email, or we'll mail you guys a letter. If you guys have questions, we'll have them forward those requests over to us, and then we'll follow up with you guys and let you guys know what our plans are.
So the point of your meeting today is to get your plan approved?
The point of my meeting today?
Yeah.
I don't have a plan. It says rezoning.
Rezoning plan, yeah.
Yeah.
To get that approved.
Yes.
Just to give you a background, can I step in for one second?
I'm not gonna answer any more of those questions.
The only thing that council's being presented with tonight is to either approve or deny a request to rezone that property from R3 to C2, right? There's no, we have, we're not at this time granting approval for any demolition, for any reconstruction. If Mr. Keasy at some time in the future, when he wants to do that, he'll have to go back through planning, back to council, and the whole process. So the only thing on the table tonight is to approve the zoning request, rezoning request. There was a public hearing at our planning meeting on Wednesday. I was the only one in attendance at that meeting. There were.
Yes, so I were. They told us.
Well, I know public notices went out as required by law.
They're not in your mail.
Okay, order, everyone, order. We can discuss that after the meeting if you like, but I know, because I verified it today, that everything was done as required by state law. Again, this went before our planning commission. Our planner, our head planner, recommended the rezoning.
Who is the high planner?
What is the person's name? Amanda Monado. She's from the Macomb County Planning and Economic Development Group. She approved it. It's in the packet, which you can download from the city website, or we could provide you with a copy tonight. Once planning approved it, then it comes, or they, they recommend approval, right? They can't actually approve anything or disprove. Now it comes to council for us to review this and either agree with the planning commission's recommendation or not. So that's what's on the table tonight. Nobody's talking tonight about bulldozing or any construction plans. You know, the city will be involved in every step of the way for any plans that might happen in the future.
Like I said, they were misled. The whole bulldozing and all of that, it's not gonna happen anytime soon, so. There'll be a site plan approval for that from the city. They'll notify everybody about that, just like how they always do. They notified you guys about the rezoning.
Demolition does not have to go through council. If they, if he, we do this, and he, this is rezoned, we, this will be the last time we vote on this issue. This is the vote.
I'm not sure if that's true. We don't have the planner here tonight. I'm not sure that's true, though.
I.
He would have to present site plans for what he was planning to do.
Site plans with lighting, with curb cuts and everything else, and that's, that's not gonna happen anytime soon.
But if we don't know what Brad O'Donnell said is true, how are you going to vote on this? You would still vote knowing that demolition.
We are voting on rezoning. That's the only thing on, that's being brought to council right now.
I think you raised a very important issue that should be, you know, discussed prior to making a decision.
Thank you for your input, but that, no construction work or demolition is being voted on tonight.
Right, but still, if the plan that you are voting on will, if that be true, they can, they can bulldoze the building any day.
Right. You know, I need to move the meeting forward. I made an allowance for you to speak outside of the, the public comment portion.
Right. We're, we're, you know, the, the plan, you know, necessarily isn't to rob the bank, but we are voting about whether or not we can approve the C4 to do it, to open the bet, I mean.
That's certainly a way, let's make our motion, and then we can open up discussion for council at that point, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keasy. So at this time, I would be looking for a motion to approve the rezoning of parcel 11-10-04-228-004 from R3 to C2.
So moved.
Motion by Deanne, support by Sakura. Council, we're open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, really quick, I know I can get verbose on council, so I'll try to keep it quick. I made some bullet points. So, bottom line, you know, Puff didn't properly plan for parking, now they're trying to make it our problem. We need the revenue from that building. We just had a meeting before this one, that money is so tight, we're, we're trying to We're, we're trying to play shell games to move things around. Last year, we had to discontinue downtown flowers because money is so tight. This will cost us $9,300 per year. Every year, we're gonna lose nearly $10,000 off this building. There'll be fewer people coming to downtown, supporting non-drug-related businesses. In three years, when weed stores are everywhere, this parking lot will be completely unused. And most, in my opinion, most importantly, it's unacceptable and irresponsible to reduce our housing stock during a housing crisis. I, I think this will raise the rent for everybody else, and I'm voting no.
Thank you for your points, Councilman O'Donnell. I too had concerns about what the impact on property tax would be if the ultimate goal of turning that into a parking lot ends up happening, right? So, again, we're kind of veering off the purpose of tonight's meeting cuz we really are just talking about rezoning tonight. Anyways, I don't know where you got the number of a $9,000 difference in property tax. I had the actual numbers run today from our assessor and our.
BSNA. I got it.
Pardon me?
I looked up the parcel on BSNA.
Okay. The, the actual difference would be $1,070.73 based on the 2022 assessment and what the proposed value of it would be as a parking lot in the future. So, that's the real number. $1,070.73.
I cannot.
It's a loss.
I, I cannot imagine that that parking lot is going to value for almost as much as the building did.
I, these are the numbers we received from our treasurer and our assessor. So, I mean, that's, that's what I have to rely on at this point. Is there any other?
Instead of your people. Smart.
Very smart.
We have to maintain order, folks, okay?
I know.
Is there any further discussion from council?
I, I'm really on the fence, but something that I heard, I'm, I'm really, this is, this is very hard because, no, we don't want to make anyone homeless. But what I heard Mr. Kezey say is that he has a real estate agent who is going to help every single person relocate. He is going to help you financially relocate. Did he give us a dollar? No, he didn't. And that's fair because there's a lot of other people here that aren't involved in your housing, so that should be a personal thing. It should be between you and the real estate, not you and every single person that's here tonight. Or not, you know, that's something that's personal. So, it's, it's really hard because I see his side, I see your side. You know, this is your home. You've lived here for a long time.
He has business.
Pardon me?
He has business.
He, he has business.
We have home.
So, he can provide a lot.
And he may be able to.
Meaning if you can purchase all of that.
We have to maintain order. We really can't have back and forth discussion at this point.
Okay, so that's all I have. There, I'm saying that this is just, it's a really hard decision for all of us on council.
Mr. Mayor, I know that as residents, it can be really troublesome. Sometimes things don't always work out the way you want it to. And if this should, they should come. I know that one thing that Mr. Kezey has done in the city of Utica is he's always done what he said he's going to do. Right? So, I know that he has said words that, encouragement maybe, that he would assist with replacing, replacing you into home, or some assistance in making financial efforts to do that. And from my experience in dealing with him on council, if he says he's going to do that, he's going to do it. Now, can I hold him to that, or can we hold him to that? No, maybe not. But maybe contractually, he can do something to make sure that you feel comfortable that, you know, I don't know, but I can tell you, his reputation is that he does what he says he's going to do. And that's what I've noticed as a member of council here in the city of Utica.
What's reputation about a contract?
Please, we need to maintain order. Is there any further discussion from council at this time? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the resolution to declare April 2022 Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the city of Utica recognizes the importance of the health, safety, and well-being of animals, and whereas Michigan compiled law section 750.50 provides that certain acts of neglect and/or abuse of an animal is a crime and sets forth fines and potential imprisonment for same, and whereas the city of Utica supports appropriate penalties against those found guilty of the neglect and/or abuse of an animal, and whereas awareness of the connection between animal abuse and human violence can help protect those who are vulnerable, and whereas the month of April is recognized nationally as the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Utica declares the month of April 2022 to be Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month and urge working together to prevent, recognize, and report signs of animal abuse to protect all animals from abuse and neglect. Uh, this is a similar resolution that we passed last year. It's also part of our celebration of April as Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month, which is topped off by our Utica Puppy Parade that goes from Grant Park to Pioneer Park. So, I would be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Deanne, support by Townsend. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. April is officially Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month in Utica. Thank you, everybody. On that note, I'd like to update on the progress of our puppy parade. It's gonna be held on April 30th, 2:00 PM, start time, at Grant Park, where we gather for a parade going downhill across Van Dyke. Talk to Chief Willsec and Chief Cody. We will have a fire and police escort to get everybody safely across Van Dyke. We'll end up at Pioneer Dog Park. We have some pretty neat guests coming. We have some new rescue groups that are gonna be involved. We also have a 25-foot inflatable puppy that we're gonna have to find someplace in the gravel sturdy enough to, to drive the mounts. If anyone is aware of Pops, Sweets, and Treats in McClemens, they just opened a, they're opening a food truck business, and we, our puppy parade will be their very first event for their brand-new food trucks. We're excited about having them as well. So, plans are going great. We wanna thank the Macomb Daily. We were on the cover, front page of the Macomb Daily last Monday. We're also on the cover of Macomb Now magazine. And I'm certainly hoping, hoping CNG Newspaper is gonna have us, some coverage for us in their paper as well. Uh, next item for me is the construction for the crossover at Venker and Hall Road. We got word from MDOT that that construction is to begin on April 20th and go through May 27th. We are to expect some single lane closures, but according to MDOT, they're all gonna be on off-traff, off-hours on Monday through Friday only. Uh, so I'll keep everybody updated on that. Does anyone else from council have any reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do. I know that typically, we do correspondence for filing, receiving, receiving and filing prior to, but I did receive a very important document earlier today from this person right here.
I hear that person has a birthday.
This person?
Point of order.
Turning 50?
You look the same.
Point of order.
Turning 50 on Thursday.
I'm hiding a gavel.
Turning 50 on Thursday, so I would like to ask that a motion be passed to file, receive and file that important document into the Archives of Utica.
I will, I will support that motion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, why not?
Oh, boy.
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Don't I get a vote?
Yes, the motion carries.
Was that graduation from law school or?
Thank you, Councilman Deanne.
It's adorable.
Does, are there any other reports from council? Nope. Moving forward, under Planning Commission Planner, I'm gonna go ahead and pick this one up. Believe it or not, our master plan is already coming up on the five-year mark. For anyone that was not on council at the time when this occurred last, it's important to keep our master plan updated. Grants are affected by this. And it's just a great thing to have because it's something we can refer to to make sure that we're moving the city in the direction that we all want to. So, we reached out to our planner, and they came up with a proposal to provide us with services for an update. They don't think it's gonna be extensive work. They included all the necessary meetings and public hearings to get this through the process, and the amount is $1,500. So, we have two motions. A motion to engage Macomb Planning and Economic Development to assist the city of Utica in updating the master plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Terrencey?
Support.
Support by Deanne. Any discussion from council?
They did a great job last time. Took them a long time. I mean, it took a really long time, but they did a really good job.
Yes, they did. Uh, the next motion would be to make the following budget amendments. Increase fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. General ledger account 101-721-810-000. Consultant planner by $1,500.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Thank you, everyone. Or, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
We need to use two separate votes, one for the.
Oh, that's right, we didn't vote on the first item. Let me back, let me back.
We can consolidate them if, if there's no objection to consolidate.
I can consolidate the motion.
Is there any objection?
This is the second motion, sir.
Yeah, we voted on the first one.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I hit it, I.
No.
I don't think we voted.
We didn't vote.
I don't think we voted, yeah.
No. I'm so sorry. We didn't vote. We motioned, but we didn't vote.
Correct. The clerk always keeps me out of trouble. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Would you like to redo the motion and?
I will redo the motion.
Do.
First motion is to engage Macomb Planning and Economic Development to assist the city of Utica in updating the master plan.
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey?
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. The second motion is to make the following budget amendments. Increase fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. General ledger account 101-721-810-000. Consultant slash planner by $1,500.
So moved, sorry.
Motion by Terrencey?
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. And thanks again, Madam Clerk, for keeping us on track. The next item, and I'll carry this one as well. Hopefully, I'll do a little better on this one. Is we had, in closed session, we discussed a tax tribunal settlement, and I would be looking for a motion to accept the stipulation that we discussed in closed session.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, Chief Willsec, do you have a report from fire?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just inform you that we had a catastrophic failure on our engine one pump. We don't know if it's accidental or if insurance will cover it. It has to be assessed before we can do anything with it. So, we're in the process of trying to get it in for repair, and you know how repair shops are right now. So, you'll see the old Mack running around as our backup truck. So, I'll let you know when we get determination on it.
Great, thank you. Anything else from fire? Thank you, chief. Chief Cody, please.
Mayor and council, in your packets today, what we have is a pawn broker and precious metals transaction fee request. The ordinance for the city of Utica is number 160, section 14-491C. The city council sets transaction fees assessed by the police department to pawn brokers and second-hand licenses that would include some of the precious metals. The previous fee was set by council when the ordinance was enacted in 2012 at $1 per transaction. We're requesting that council approve an increase in the fee from $1 per transaction to $1.25. What, what, how this works is if, if the pawn shop takes in something on a pawn, we get a certain amount from that transaction. It's been part of our ordinances and so forth. And as you can see, it's been 10 years since we've readdressed that ordinance. This is a revenue generating portion of our ordinances, so we're asking to increase that since we haven't done so in the past decade. So, there has been some interest in some pawn licensing, and we've expressed that we were working on this throughout that time when we're talking to some of these people coming in and making requests for new licensing. So, it appears as though we may have other stores coming into the city to help contribute to this. So, it's our request today that we have a motion to approve this new transaction fee to be set at $1.25 per transaction. Does anybody have any questions?
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Is, it's been roughly 10 years since it was enacted. Is $0.25 per transaction enough?
I, I guess.
I don't wanna get greedy, but.
Exactly. And, and that's kinda how we look at it. And we kinda went over it a little bit and doing some research in that. Obviously, if we went to like $1.50, we're looking at, you know, over a 50% increase. I guess I, I'm trying to take our businesses into consideration. I want this to be an attractive place for them to conduct business. I also want it to be something that covers our, our portion of things as far as our administrative fees, our backgrounds, and things like that. So, I thought this was kinda the best of all things considered, and I didn't think that that would be stinging them too much on their transactions. And I think after 10 years of not having any type of increases, this seemed to be a, a good place to start, so.
Does other cities have a similar amount that, so we're basing this in the area
Does other cities have a similar amount that, so we're basing this in the area where there are other cities that are charging for those transaction fees?
Yes, that's pretty much what we did, is try to take a look at what other cities are doing, kind of see where we're at. It varies from city to city. This, this puts us in good position, I think, from what we've previously been charging. And obviously, i- if it went up 50%, you can imagine we're going to probably have some, some kickback, but I don't think this is unreasonable, and I think it's a good revenue generator.
I personally think it's too low. We're not talking an increase from $100 to $150. We're looking of increase of 50 cents if you went 50%. And since we haven't touched it in 10 years, when you extrapolate out the increase and do a multiply, you're probably at a percent and a half a year to get to 25%. So, I'm ju- it's not being greedy, 50 cents more, by the time you generate your paperwork, accounting, waiting for the check to come in, I, again, being a business owner, I don't want to pay extra fees, but I don't think 50 cents over a 10-year period is all that terrible. So, I, I would say instead of a buck and a quarter, it becomes a buck and a half.
And also, just so I understand, so it says per transaction, so if I went to a pawn shop and I pawn this water bottle, right, and then I pulled out a pawn, is that one transaction or is that two transactions?
That's actually, my understanding is it goes to one transaction, but here's how it works as well. If you bring in your lawnmower and your chainsaw, and you're bringing them in for pawn, that's one transaction, okay? That's my understanding of the ordinance. So, again, I don't think we're being too greedy. I think the increase is, I'm trying to think of it on both sides, so I, I understand both sides of it, obviously, from, from both the revenue side. I'm also trying to see it from a business side, so.
Yeah, I don't think we mentioned, Chief, is what, this also applies to Best Buy, is that right?
Yes, Best Buy does some things where they take in computers, and there's a couple of reasons that they do that. They have the, I'm trying to remember the name of the business that runs within them.
Geek Squad?
The Geek Squad, thank you. Yep, and what they do is they, they take in a lot of the computers because they're the precious metals. And so, they're taking them in, and it is considered part of the precious metals and pawning portion of it. So, there are some big box stores that are conducting business at a little bit different level on a regular basis. So, it does stand to benefit the city for the increase.
Well, that's why we have discussion. I mean, this-
I think I'm with Ken.
I would be in favor of-
I think I'm with Ken, too.
Buck and a half, dollar and a half instead of a dollar and a quarter.
Yeah, especially if I'm-
Who made the original motion, was it Salem?
I'll amend that a motion to make that a dollar and a half.
Second, he has to support that.
I support, that's-
Okay, the amended motion by Torenzi, and the amended support by Councilman Ryan. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything further, Chief?
That's all we have in, in the way of any type of agenda items. I just want to notify our residents in that as we get into the warmer months, be cautious of your residents that are going to be out with their children on the city streets and so forth. So, in their driving, make sure they're taking consideration their other neighbors as they're traversing through our residential streets. Obviously, things are going to start getting busier traffic-wise. Please be patient for some of the improvements that we're going to be doing around the city, because there are going to be some traffic changes in, in the near future. So, just keep that in mind. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Lane, DPW report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Two items on the agenda tonight. First is the, addresses the road resurfacing projects that we'd like to have approved tonight for this, this spring's construction to be done early summer. After review and going through the bid process and the, you should have in your packet a request to approve Hutch paving for the award of the, of the contract as presented to the city for that paving project. There's, so a motion would be requested to approve Hutch paving as the, and their contract award, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Socora.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Actually, the second motion is a little more descriptive of, probably make it a little easier for Deion to understand the award. We're looking for a motion to amend the local street budget in the amount of $165,000 in the line item of 203482967000. Impressive, huh?
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah.
That's, that, that-
I was following you, just for the record. I was watching.
I was, too.
Correct. That's to cover the $127,000 and some change of the actual bid amount from Hutch paving, plus contingency, plus engineering, and some testing that would be needed. So, we need the amendment of $165,000 in that line item, 203482967000. Please and thank you. Local street budget.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council?
I'm happy that it's getting done, so thank you.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll look to see that get done. Projected end date is sometime around in July.
Please do Custer first. Please.
Okay.
Well, from what, from what Mr. Lane, how he explained it to me, it's really going to be just a few days of work between the milling and any removal material and repaving or resurfacing.
Barring, barring, yeah, excuse my interruption, but barring any weather issues or equipment issues, they should move in relatively fast. Once they get here, they'll move in, they'll mill the streets and, and prep them and pave right, relatively right behind. I, now, I'm not sure on the staging. They could leave and come back because of the window that they have, but I don't look to see that. I look, I would expect that they'll come in. The equipment's large, it takes a lot to get it here. They'll probably come in, mill it out, you know, do the proper repairs that are needed, and then top coat it and stripe it and do some restoration and be done. But I, anyway, I hate to put any numbers. I don't, I don't think they'll be here much more than a week, to be honest with you.
I'll tell my friend.
Yeah. So, we look to see that. The good news is, is we had preliminary numbers that we looked at early on when we brought this to council, and they were within $300 of what the preliminary thought was. So, I thank my, our, our local bidder that helped us out to get that together. So, we're thankful for the project. Second on the agenda is actually a, a correction to last month's meeting, and I apologize for that. What you have before you is, we need two motions in regards to the stormwater ordinance that we adopted last month. The ordinance, the proper ordinance was reviewed and approved and recommended. However, the wrong copy of the ordinance was put into the packet. There's actually one line that's removed, and so, we need to rescind the ordinance that was, one motion to rescind the ordinance that was adopted last month, or would be current ordinance, Linda? Yes?
I mean, you could make a motion to amend in accordance with the new ordinance or to rescind and replace with this one.
Okay, so however you'd like to do it, I have it set up for two motions, one to rescind the current ordinance, and second, replace it with the one that's in your packet.
I think you can make that one motion.
Okay, and we will do what Ms. McGrell suggests.
All right, we'll make a motion based on what our fine city attorney just said.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Torenzi.
She gets too old to have to-
Discussion by council. I would like to mention, too, for the record, this is not Mr. Lane's fault. Like, there was a lot of confusion, because this was coming from Eagle, right?
Yes.
And they sent in a revision kind of late in the game, and so, this really doesn't lie.
The ordinance was submitted, it was, it was tentatively approved, and then at the, we'll call it the hundredth hour, there was a, a change based on what-
And we had already done our internal review.
Right. And then it was submitted and resubmitted, and it was file A instead of file B, and garbage in, garbage out. But that's where we're at.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else from DPW?
Just, do you want to address the ARPA funds at all as far as what our thoughts are moving forward? Just to-
Sure.
So, just in, just to update council, give you a little heads up, the, in and about, after budgets wind down or sometime around that same time. To address council with the thought processes on how to use the ARPA funds and maybe hold a public meeting at the same time prior to a council meeting. I think that was the plan.
Yes.
Just to get us in line to, as some options as to how we would suggest we utilize the ARPA funds. That's, that's the idea. ARPA funds being the federal funds for infrastructure improvements and some other things. And we've had meetings with HRC, myself, the mayor, Phil, and we have some suggestions for council as to where we think the money would be best allocated.
And a works, what we're considering is having HRC come in.
Yes.
Give us a presentation, also make it open to the public, obviously, as part of a work session, and get their feedback, just so that we're making wise decisions. You know, when I'm talking to other municipalities, they've got all these options, you know, they're getting in the millions of dollars, and they're talking about, you know, buying school buildings and opening butterfly parks and all this kind of stuff. You know, we have very limited funds coming, you know, in the tune of $500,000 or so. So, obviously, we have limited options about how to spend that money. So, it's important that we, we have a plan, so.
And we'd like to share that in, well in advance, so that it can sink in and everybody feels like they're, you know, we want to make good decisions based on what the, the people want.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Are we, is Mr. Paternoster going to join us for his item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in your packet a resolution regarding the bad debt expense that Great Lakes Water Authority claims to be owed to the system by the City of Highland Park. There has been some discussion going on amongst the wholesale customers of the Great Lakes Water Authority that I believe was started by board members of the authority back in February or early March regarding a fairly sizable bad debt expense that Great Lakes claims the City of Highland Park owes to the system. I will state that the City of Highland Park rejects that assertion, claims they don't owe anything to Great Lakes Water Authority. Great Lakes Water Authority has been trying to persuade the State of Michigan to get involved because of the history of this situation, and I believe this board sent, approved a letter to the State of Michigan a month ago. Anyway, as a resident mentioned earlier in the evening, some of the communities that are wholesale customers, as Utica is, have been of the opinion that they should withhold the portion of bad debt expense attributed to their communities for the upcoming fiscal year beginning July 1. And so, I have prepared a resolution which, if the council so decides to adopt, would direct the treasurer to place in an escrow account the sum of money attributed to fiscal year 2023's bad debt expense, and hold that in escrow until such time as Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Highland Park have resolved this issue. The, the intent of this resolution, I think, would be fair to say that it's to put some feet to the fire and hopefully persuade the State of Michigan to get involved since this whole situation arose from a decision at the state level back in 2012. And so, I submit to you a resolution to put the Great Lakes Water Authority and the Macomb County Wastewater Disposal District on notice that the City of Utica will place in escrow the sum of the bad debt expense attributed to the City of Utica for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, until such time as the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Highland Park have resolved the issue of bad debts.
I will emphatically make, or make the motion to adopt that resolution.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Ryan. Discussion from council. It's important to note that this will begin with our next payment, which is-
It would be the-
End of July, isn't that right, Phil?
It would be a payment in August for the July billing cycle.
Okay. Any further discussion from council?
I mean, it is not right for our residents to pay the bill of the people of Highland, of Highland Park. The issue also is compounded because there are people in Highland Park that pay their water bills to that city, and that city then absconded with the funds and didn't make payments with it. So, there's talk of emergency managers and everything else, and something has to happen. But it is not in any way feasible our responsibility. We're taking care of our own bills with our water department, which is a burden already on our city for past practices, on our residents. And it's not right to put another burden on them for something that we did nothing to be involved with.
Yeah, I went to an executive meeting with the GLWA, and on that meeting, the attorney representing the members of the GLWA reports that Highland Park is still showing revenue, which means they're collecting water bills from their residents, but they're not paying their bills. So, you know, I 100% agree with you, Mayor Pro Tim, that we can't, if our residents don't pay their bills, we shut them off. It's not fair that we continue to pay bills for other cities who aren't being treated the same as our residents. So, this is an important move. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. One thing I would like to mention, we decided to make this decision in resolution form, so that we have a document that we can address or, you know, present to the governor and to state government, rather than just making the vote of council. Now, we have a document that we can distribute. Mr. Treasurer, did you have anything else to report today, sir?
I'm sorry, no, I have nothing else to report this evening, other than thank you for approving the chief's request for the $1.50, or $25, as he said. Since he only wanted a buck twenty-five, I say you give the other 25 to the admin that's going to be processing his bills for him. That, that's all, thank you.
There is some legitimacy to that request, because there is some administrative, you know, time that's going to be used by the city office in processing this and whatever. So, perhaps we can discuss that, Chief.
For sure.
Since you did only ask for- Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Paternoster. Madam Clerk, administration report.
Did you want me to go over the Americans with Disabilities Act? I thought you-
I can go over this for you. In doing some research, we discovered a federal regulation that all cities with populations of 50 or more, which Utica does fall into that category, are required to have a Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator, someone that is a point person for anyone that's making a request, you know, for accommodations due to, you know, something that falls under that act. So, we took action, we did research. Thank you, Ms. McGrell, for helping us along with that. And in the packet is-
I might need it on Thursday, in case you're wondering.
So, under that, we have our notice, which we will be required to publish on our city website, and we also have our policy. At this time, we are looking to appoint Ms. Colleen Frazier, who's currently the Utica Deputy Clerk, as the City of Utica ADA coordinator.
So moved.
Motion by Socora.
Support.
Support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Frazier. We will give her the good news tomorrow morning. And your next item? I'm letting you do this one. Get ready, Ken.
Mayor and Council, in your packet, we have a request to close the administration offices on July 1, 2022. It is a Friday. We are scheduled to be closed already on Monday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. We do have many requests for vacation for that day, and we usually close the doors to the public at 11:30, as it is on Fridays. So, we're- So, we are asking council for approval to close our offices for the whole day on Friday, July 1.
Now, just to be clear, I will be here, but they don't let me answer the phone. So, that's why there's, literally, the whole office is asking for that day as a vacation day, I believe, right? Everyone that has vacation days.
It is true.
So, there's no staff, if all those vacation requests are granted, there's no staffing.
You have to talk to the public through the window.
Yeah.
So, I would be looking for a motion.
I would be fine if you put a window at the mayor's window off the sidewalk, maybe like a speaker window, like you talk through.
Like a drive-thru. Maybe I can grill hot, it's like 4th of July weekend, I could grill hot dogs or something, too.
There you go.
I think it'd be selling, hey, baby monitors on that side of a wall.
So, I believe Madam Clerk is looking for a motion at this time?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an extra day of office closings on July 1, 2022, so that our good and city, our good city employees can enjoy an extra day off per their regular scheduled vacation days.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell. Discussion from council?
Wages will be covered by those two.
Well, they're, no, these are, these are vacation days.
Well, they don't have to, they'll cover the wages.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, we all appreciate it.
And I would, the next item is our city attorney, Ms. McGrell.
Mayor and Council, in closed session, we discussed some collective bargaining developments. You've been provided with a tentative agreement that's been signed by the Police Officers Labor Council with regard to the proposal brought to the city by them. If council so desires, now would be an appropriate time to approve that tentative agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the tentative agreement as discussed in closed session.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. McGrell?
Nothing further at this time.
At this point, we're going to open the floor again for communication from the public. This would be for any item that was not on the agenda. All participants are requested to limit their time to three minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? Since there's no one that would like to address council, we would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.